Home?
Here.
Hawkinsmith?
Here.
Connolly?
Here.
Altringer?
Here.
McCoy?
Here. Action on the minutes from the previous meeting?
Move.
Second.
Roll call?
Home?
Yes.
Hawkinsmith?
Yes.
Connolly?
Yes.
Altringer?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes. Any special claims?
None.
Action on the bill list is submitted by the county auditor. Roll call?
Home?
Yes.
Hawkinsmith?
Yes.
Connolly?
Yes.
Altringer?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes. Stand for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, we'll receive public comments for anybody that would like to address the board on any topic this morning. Just please state your name and...
Okay. Good morning. My name is Peg Rasmussen. I live in Johnston, Iowa, so I'm a Polk County resident. I also happen to own farmland in Montgomery County, Iowa. And so I just want to say thank you to the board today for putting on your agenda the item that came from the Iowa State Association of Counties relating to the asking for a contribution towards the legal fees for Shelby and Story Counties lawsuits. So I just appreciate that as one of the largest counties in the state that you want to recognize that together we're stronger and that our rural counties are really under attack by entities in terms of trying to take away local control. So as a larger county, you maybe have the wherewithal to fight back against sometimes when an entity, a business, is wanting to push against you, but a lot of our counties don't. So thank you, and I hope that you will pass the resolution.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Jess Missmore. I live in Des Moines, lifelong Des Moines resident, Polk County resident, and a little ashamed to admit that I've been to probably fifty county supervisor meetings, but this is my first Polk County, even though I'm a lifelong resident. So this is first time for everything. But I'm here to speak in favor of item number forty-six on your agenda, and that is the same thing that Peg just spoke about, supporting ICAC's local control amicus brief in front of the U.S. Supreme Court. I, like I said, live here in Polk County, but my family lives in Guthrie County, which is an impacted county by the Summit Carbon Pipeline. And for a little bit of background, Summit has sued counties that are passing zoning ordinance to protect economic interests from this pipeline. And how far away is the project from people's homes, businesses, schools, city limits, you name it. And so we are trying to protect zoning, and it's not just for this pipeline, it's for any project in the future. And we all know that when Navigator Carbon Pipeline was a proposed project, before we got it canceled, it was proposed to go through Polk County. So this is in our interest, and it goes beyond just the Summit Carbon Pipeline. It goes for any infrastructure project in the future. We need to protect our ability to zone. So thank you very much, and item number forty-six. Thanks.
Thank you. I was mentioning to some of my board members, I don't think we've ever seen a time when on an amicus brief, Iowa Farm Bureau, Sierra Club, and the Association of Counties are all together. I don't know that that will ever happen again, but what a unique combination of players. So thank you for being here. Kail, good morning.
Graham Rising. I apologize. I was trying to get the agenda because I liked the way that you opened up and said, "Thank you for item," you know, and I was trying to follow suit.
You bet.
But I couldn't find it. But anyway, no, but item forty-seven, forty-five, and there's probably another. Anyway, good morning, everybody. Graham Rising. First of all, I give honor to God because my discipline, wish not to offend anyone. But from Creative Visions, the board, from our staff, you know, we want to thank the Polk County Board of Supervisors for your support. We want to thank you for your commitment to help make this city and Polk County safer. You know, without you, you know, we couldn't have made the next steps this next year, you know, to continue work that we've been able to do. You know, your commitment to the safety of Polk County, your commitment, your vision, you know, is necessary. And the relationship that I didn't turn my phone off, you know, it's been... Okay. I'll try. Angela messed up.
Okay.
Okay.
We forgive you.
Thank you. But anyway, you know, I always try to bring a little humor because I tell people I laugh to keep them crying. Because we're at a point now in our community that it is necessary for us to go forward and to make Des Moines and Polk County safer and to deal with our babies. You know, as you know, if we get a report, you know, we're dealing with children that are nine years old that are carrying weapons in our streets. And just not too long ago, about a week and a half, you know, I was leaving Creative Visions and I got stopped and I had to go back in. But if I had have kept going home, I would have been caught right in front of my house in a gun crossfire with the oldest individual who was carrying the gun, we found out was fourteen years old. And they were shooting down the street of Eighteenth Street with other kids outside playing, you know. And it was really interesting because the neighbors came out and they said, "They're not supposed to do this on our street, Kail." You know, and I said, "They're not supposed to do this on any street." But the city, Polk County, is taking care to make sure that we can continue our work, to be able to address this issue. So we humbly thank you, and we look continually to work with you over the years and to make Polk County the safest place in the Midwest. That's what we're looking to do. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Kail. Anyone else? If not, we'll move on to petitions.
Number seven, petition suspending taxes and special assessments and authorizing chairperson to sign the application and affidavit for redemption of parcel for those listed on the agenda.
Roll call?
Home?
Yes.
Hawkinsmith?
Yes.
Connolly?
Yes.
Altringer?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes. Resolutions.
Number eight, resolution approving the final plat of the reserve at Jester Park Plat Three. Nine, resolution approving the Woodlands at Molton Preserve Preliminary Plat. Ten, resolution approving Sedell Heights Preliminary Plat. Eleven and twelve, our resolutions authorizing Auditor's Office to publish notice of public hearing on December second on disposal of interest in county-owned real estate for a vacant parcel located at sixteen twenty-one Forest Avenue, Des Moines, to Home Inc. And a parcel located at the corner of Southwest High Point Drive and Southwest Oral Labor Road, Ankeny, to NP Holdings LLC. Number thirteen, resolution authorizing Auditor's Office to publish notice of public hearing on December second to consider plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for the Four Mile Creek Stream Restoration Project, ARA Two. Fourteen, resolution approving right of entry and temporary construction easement agreement with Rebecca Mullenax. Fifteen, resolution approving sanitary sewer extension agreement with Jennifer Sullivan. Sixteen, resolution awarding contract for Mullenax Wetland Project to J.C. Midwest Services. Seventeen, resolution approving agreement with the Brook Run Village Owners Association for the Brook Run Stream Stabilization Project. And number eighteen, resolution approving right of entry and temporary construction easements for the Brook Run Stream Stabilization Project.
Move.
Second.
Roll call?
Home?
Yes.
Hawkinsmith?
Yes.
Connolly?
Yes.
Altringer?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Number nineteen, resolution approving twenty-eight E agreement for facility use with Townsend Community Center. And twenty, resolution approving lease agreement with American Abstract Title.
Move. Second.
Roll call?
Home?
Yes.
Hawkinsmith?
Yes.
Connolly?
Yes.
Altringer?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Number twenty-one, resolution approving agreement with the Iowa Department of Health and Human Services for financial support of the Refugee Alliance of Central Iowa.
So move.
Second.
Roll call?
Home?
Yes.
Hawkinsmith?
Yes.
Connolly?
Yes.
Altringer?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Number twenty-two, resolution approving logo license agreement with Principal Foundation.
I'll move it. Second.
Roll call?
Home?
Yes.
Hawkinsmith?
Yes.
Connolly?
Yes.
Altringer?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Number twenty-three, resolution approving agreement with the Fifth District Department of Corrections for the Youth Supervision Program.
Move. Second.
Roll call?
Home?
Yes.
Hawkinsmith?
Yes.
Connolly?
Yes.
Altringer?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Number twenty-four, resolution approving position modification in the General Services Department. And number twenty-five, resolution approving group insurance providers.
Move.
Second.
All these insurance things, they're all staying the same, right?
So we went to RFP on all five of our benefits. Some of them are changing, but very limited disruption, so no one should notice really any changes to any of the plans. There was some cost decreases and increases, but overall we're below what we're seeing nationally as far as increases. So Human Resources did a really good job. The vendors were competitive. So I don't think you'll notice any change.
Okay.
I would like to just acknowledge the work of the Human Resources team, Lola and your team, for all that you've done in completing these RFPs and going to market with this. Again, I think this is an effort to address, you know, fairness, transparency, and competition in the marketplace to get not only the best cost, but also provide the best value to our employees. We've made a priority to support social services in Polk County, throughout the county for the community. That includes our shelters, food banks, mental health services, as well as economic development opportunities. But what is clear is that we've not lost sight of the fact that we have an amazing workforce at Polk County, and we're acknowledging that by this benefit package. Approving these benefits today is a reminder that this board understands our employees are the foundation of what we do in Polk County, and our employees' well-being is a priority. And it's a core priority, not only for the employees that are caring for themselves and their families, physically, mentally, and financially, from preventative care to routine checkups, mental health resources, prescriptions, as well as wellness programs. These are tools that we put in place to help ensure that you have the support you need at every stage of your life. So I think that as we compete for the workforce of tomorrow, retaining and attracting employees is an important aspect of that. And I'm grateful for the positive outcomes, the work of our Human Resource Department, the work they do day in and day out, and want to acknowledge that today. With that, we'll do a roll call.
Home?
Yes.
Hawkinsmith?
Yes.
Connolly?
Yes.
Altringer?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Number twenty-six, resolution authorizing Auditor's Office to publish Polk County revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balances for year ended June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Second.
Roll call?
Home?
Yes.
Hawkinsmith?
Yes.
Connolly?
Yes.
Altringer?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Numbers twenty-seven through twenty-nine, our resolutions approving manufactured home abatement, City of Des Moines abatement, and state abatements.
Move. Second.
Roll call?
Home?
Yes.
Hawkinsmith?
Yes.
Connolly?
Yes.
Altringer?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Numbers thirty and thirty-one, our resolutions approving TIF indebtedness certification and indebtedness reduction for Polk City North Urban Renewal Area and Norwoodville Urban Renewal Area. Numbers thirty-two and thirty-three, our resolutions approving TIF indebtedness reduction for Saylorville Business Park Urban Renewal Area and Whitetail Ridge Residential Urban Renewal Area. Number thirty-four, resolution approving Polk County Annual Urban Renewal Report. And number thirty-five, resolution approving loan agreement with Polk County Conservation.
So move.
Second.
Roll call?
Home?
Yes.
Hawkinsmith?
Yes.
Connolly?
Yes.
Altringer?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Numbers thirty-six and thirty-seven, our resolutions approving recommendation of the Polk County Assessor for allowances and disallowance of the Homestead tax credit. Numbers thirty-eight and thirty-nine, our resolutions approving the recommendation of the Polk County Assessor for allowances and disallowance of the Homestead tax exemption. Numbers forty and forty-one, our resolutions approving recommendation of the Polk County Assessor for allowance and disallowance of the military service tax exemption. And number forty-two, resolution approving the recommendation of the Polk County Assessor for allowances and disallowances of the family farm tax credit claims.
Move.
Second.
Roll call?
Home?
Yes.
Hawkinsmith?
Yes.
Connolly?
Yes.
Altringer?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Number forty-three, resolution abating taxes for Link Associates Foundation for property at two forty-nine Twenty-third Street, West Des Moines. And number forty-four, resolution approving sponsorship agreement with KEG One Iowa for sponsorship and advertising at the Iowa Event Center.
So move.
Second.
Roll call?
Home?
Yes.
Hawkinsmith?
Yes.
Connolly?
Yes.
Altringer?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Number forty-five, resolution approving funding agreement with Creative Visions.
I'll move it.
Second.
Second.
Roll call?
Home?
Yes.
Hawkinsmith?
Yes.
Connolly?
Yes.
Altringer?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Number forty-six, resolution approving agreement with the Iowa State Association of Counties. And number forty-seven, resolution approving agreement with legal aid.
Move. Second.
Roll call?
Home?
Yes.
Hawkinsmith?
Yes.
Connolly?
Yes.
Altringer? McCoy?
Yes.
Numbers forty-eight through fifty-two, our resolutions approving community development grant awards for Bondurant Soccer Club, Creative Visions, Des Moines Children's Museum, Terrace Hill Partnership, and Veterans of Foreign Wars, Boline Men Freddy Post, nine six six two. And number fifty-three, resolution approving community sponsorship awards.
So move.
Second.
Roll call?
Home?
Yes.
Hawkinsmith?
Yes.
Connolly?
Yes.
Altringer?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes. Communications?
Number fifty-four, notice of appraisement of damages and time for appeal in the matter of the condemnation of certain rights and land for the two thousand and twenty-six Neighborhood Sidewalk Program.
Refer to the treasurer and the county attorney?
Number fifty-five, request for tax abatement for property located at one 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 eight zero Northeast Thirteenth Avenue, Maxwell.
Refer to the assessor, treasurer, and county attorney?
Number fifty-six, City of West Des Moines Notice of Consultation Concerning Proposed Amendment Number Eight to the Alluvian Urban Renewal Plan. Fifty-seven, City Development Board Notice of Meeting to Consider Carlisle Voluntary Annexation within the urbanized area of the City of Des Moines.
Refer to Public Works and County Attorney. Any budget actions?
None.
Appointments?
Move.
Second.
Roll call?
Home?
Yes.
Hawkinsmith?
Yes.
Connolly?
Yes.
Altringer?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes. Any board comments this morning?
I do.
Okay.
But this isn't actually county-related. Sometimes I just like to bring up fun things that are going on in the area or the state. So yesterday I had the opportunity to coach my fourth, sixth grade team in mock trial. And what I think is really cool is that in Iowa, they allow sixth, seventh, and eighth grade students to compete in mock trial. And we're the only state that does have a middle school program. And to see these little sixth graders that don't even stand often five foot tall and soon... And to see these little 6th graders that don't even stand often 5 foot tall and soons, like, doing critical thinking, public speaking, using that self-confidence and yelling objections is pretty amazing. And when you take a 6th grader who doesn't even know the difference between civil and criminal when they first come to practice, and put him through, yesterday it was two rounds at regionals, and have them come out and make it to state, was really impressive. And, you know, it is a great state program. It's great to see all the schools in the Des Moines area participate, and I look forward to moving them through for the next week and a half to their state competition. I got involved in 2016 with my oldest, and I've been, I guess, a groupie ever since coaching these teams. I really thought this year I was going to break my streak of making it to state, but nope, they surprised me once again, and they did awesome. So, thank you, just, it was a really great parent and coaching moment, and I wanted to share.
Well, I've had the opportunity to judge some of those, and I always walk away with hope for the future, that there's great, smart kids ready to take the role in the future, so it's always encouraging. Anyone else? If not, we do have a closed session today.
Number 60, To Discuss Strategy with Counsel in Matters That Are Presently in Litigation or Where Litigation Is Imminent, Where Its Disclosure Would Be Likely to Prejudice or Disadvantage the Position of the Governmental Body in That Litigation Pursuant to Section 21.51(c).
So move.
Second.
Rule call.
Holm.
Yes.
Hawkinsmith.
Yes.
Connolly.
Yes.
Altringer.
Yes.
McCoy.
Yes.
Before we close, Mr. Chairman, is there a technology where I can be included in the closed session?
Yes.
How are we going to do that?
We, I think we're planning on calling you, so I think you can hang up now, and then we'll call when we go into the closed session. Supervisor Hawkinsmith.
Can't you just stay in the line? Are we doing it in here? Oh, okay, never mind.
All right, thank you.
Erica, can he hang up? You need to get his number, because I don't have it.
Yes, this is the school address.
Oh, they have their share and yeah, yeah, yeah.
Sir, it's going to be coming?
Yes.